I'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. We'd like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council to order. Going to ask that this time if you have your cell phones, if you would turn them off, put them on mute. We're going to ask the number one sheriff in the whole wide world to come and lead us in prayer.
Sure.
And going to ask that I'll do the pledge. And Sheriff, I didn't do it.
Are you going to pray or me?
You go pray.
Okay, I'll do it.
All right. Who would bow your heads? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the many ways that you blessed us. We thank you for the jobs that we have in law enforcement, first responders. We'd ask that you continue to bless us. You're there with us so much and we appreciate it. For those in this building that are in leadership roles and elected positions, bless us also and help us to make right decisions and good decisions and just act like you're in the room with us because you really are. And let us realize that too. Thank you for the many, many ways you blessed us for our health and our families and our friends and even having a job because there's so many people that don't. But we ask that all these things in the holy name of Jesus, in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Put your hand up and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you call the role, please?
Councilwoman Taylor, present. Councilman Brooks.
Here.
Councilman Taylor Farrell.
Here ma'am.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Jackson. Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilwoman Nolan.
Present.
Thank you. Tomorrow I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference meeting Monday, February 27, 2023, and the Shreveport City Council meeting Tuesday, February 28, 2023. Does any member of the council have any award or recognition of distinguished guests today not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to call Orville Hall up to the front. Mr. Hall, thank you so much for coming in.
Good morning.
With all of the buzz and excitement I believe that you are in, that you have been hearing in the city of Shreveport, even across the river and on Facebook, I think that you need to tell them who you are and in five minutes or less, tell them what the excitement and the enthusiasm is all about.
Okay, well, let me start first by thanking first the city council for having me and having the personal meeting with me to explain these things. I want to thank the mayor's office for being a part of this whole thing and listening to the idea. And Mr. Tom Dark, I want to thank you for meeting with me twice, you know, the mayor's meeting and personally because I know everybody's very busy. But let me start by saying this. This plan that I have, you'll know my background, right? But I want to start by saying I'm more proud of being a humble servant, right? This plan is of God and I hope my words help deliver it in a way that Shreveport can accept this blessing. All right, the thing we've heard about Mr. Jackson coming to Shreveport is, can be a great machine for the world to see the city that I see. I want you to know that it didn't start with him. I've been here for five years researching the city and seeing the things that I can maybe offer for the city's battle, okay? I want to start by saying it's not unusual for a third party to be able to have a point of view on something that someone in a fight doesn't see. And Shreveport is in a fight. That's what I see. It's a beautiful city, but you're fighting matrix and that matrix is population decrease, right? When the movie industry left, so many jobs went with it. The matrix, if you Google Shreveport, Louisiana, is the top most, one of the top most shrinking cities in the nation out of 500 cities and the fourth slowest growing economy. That is a matrix that no administration can work with. Population decrease doesn't help anyone, right? So the idea is to address the population decrease. And sometimes it's not unusual to be in a fight and someone walks up and say, hey, this is their path, okay? So the idea is how do we address that? Let's look at some success of that. Hollywood's been around for 120 years and California's boom population is because of that. Las Vegas was a little town in the desert until a guy Frank Sinatra bought it entertainment and now they're around forever. Now let's look at Atlanta that has last year, population grew by 65,000 people and because of Tyler Perry's move there. So I want to bring something to the table deliberately. What if we were able to co-labor with a machine of Mr. Jackson's size to create a co-develop, a co-develop a economic development revitalization plan that is fueled by a machine such as that? So let's talk about that. There's a town Waco, Texas down the block that has a show on HGTV called Fixer Upper. That one show has Waco, Texas seeing 30,000 people a week. That is economics. Laurel, Mississippi, hometown, one show has now developed over 180 undeveloped houses in Laurel, Mississippi. That's economics. Shreveport is 20 minutes in every direction. This machine can first bring back hope. The young people of this city knows what that opportunity can be. That is an injection of hope. Hope can begin to stop the decline. Then deliberately to create a path using that machine to address your economics such as jobs. This will bring back thousands of jobs to the cities on both sides. You have a workforce that left of over 1,000 people that's still around hoping to come back. Those are houses. That's population. On the other side, there will be a pilgrimage back to the city if people know there's a business here of movie that they can come and be close to. And then your economics will turn around and start benefiting you because it's a beautiful place. It's just if they Google you, it says you're a shrinking city, so they're not coming. But if we get them to come, I just bought a beautiful home on Cross Lake. They just need to be here. We have a plan to create a program with the high schools, acting and media. How great would it be if because of his popularity, they give us their time? They stay after school for an extra four hours? How great would that be for the parents to know their kids are somewhere safe? And that's just because they know the opportunity. And in any good plan that's about redevelopment, rebuilding, you better start with your foundation. And your foundation are your lowest economic areas because 20 minutes in every direction, your economic areas touch everybody, right? One of our plans is to show like a fixer-upper, but in this city, let's call it Flip the City, where we turn young renters into homeowners. How great would that be? TV races to 100 episodes. How great we're doing 100 houses in Shreveport when everything, everybody knows each other and we're doing great things and they see the council and mayor's office working together. That's hope. That's what the city needs. What about crime prevention? These young people in a program where they can do internships with the production teams on everything, a database of extras here where everything shot here, they have to use the database. That's jobs. That's hope. What about, like I said, it's so much we can do if we do it together from the beginning deliberately. Now that I know the library is important, okay? The library is suffering the same fate as movie theaters. Young people don't go because they get the information on their phones. But certainly in this plan, we can take the stars that come here and bring them to your existing library. And guess what's going to happen? The kids aren't going to come, okay? This is not a divisive plan. This plan is a way to use a machine to change this city. Hollywood's been around for 120 years, but the gift of this is Mr. Jackson is ready to come in in the beginning and we work together. So it's not a guy just coming to film a movie here. It's a guy that has the top four television shows on TV right now that's willing to give us this gift to offer to our young people.
And so with many who may not know Mr. Jackson's real name, would you?
They call him 50 Cent, right? And this happened from a phone call to me because he heard of, he knows I've been here. I've been calling him since before the pandemic. So I've been here for five years and I believe Shreveport is great product, right? And with great product, there's no gimmicks, there's no tricks. You just have to get it in front of people.
Yes.
And this machine can do that.
So he wants to make an investment in our city.
He wants to bring his business here to Shreveport. And let me say this, I've had a connection with Shreveport for many years. I'm actually a hip hop legend too. I'm in a group called the Show, I was the founder of a group called the Show Boys that started a record called Drag Rap that now is the most sampled record in the world, but it started bounce music for Louisiana. So I'm in your DNA, right? I was the first record executive to come here and sign an artist Hurricane Chris who represented Shreveport with five platinum records. So I, and let me show this, I love Shreveport. I brought a home here in Shreveport and I think the rest of the world needs to see Shreveport. And this is the 50th year of hip hop. How great would it be if old school legends and a young hip hop mogul got together and offered a gift from God to the city and it changed these young people's life forever?
Thank you.
So that's all I'm here to say.
Phil, you can come up, if you please come up.
Oh, and this is, this is the second half of the Show Boys right here.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just want to kind of get an understanding for the record. What's your relationship to 50? Are you authorized to make decision on his behalf to enter a negotiation? If other meetings need to be set up with our administration, would that be handled by you and how can they get in touch with you in order to get more information in order to help us make this decision as soon as possible?
Right, well, first again, let me thank all of the offices, not just the city council and the mayor's office, but the DDA, the SPAR, everyone has met with me. I am 50 Cent Curtis Jackson's representative here in Shreveport. I've begged him to come and he's given me the honor to deliver this to you. And like I said, it didn't start with him. I have brought Master P here, I've brought Deb Atney here, I've brought Yandy Smith who would host the Flip the City. I brought Mona Scott here who is a movie mogul. It's just I finally got Mr. Jackson and I am representing him and he is excited, excited about bringing his business here.
And we are too.
And I can be contacted. If you need me to get him on the phone, call me and I'll get him on the phone. But like I said, this is not a guy coming to film a movie. This is an economic development revitalization plan that will be fueled by entertainment. And then, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, but then what happens, this is private. The city can get to use your money, fix the streets and salaries. My garbage, I want to see my garbage men make more than me. You can do everything you need to do for the city while we take care of what we call the debts. You could fix the brakes, okay? So we thank, I thank you. I can turn. It's almost a fail-proof plan to get attention to the problems that we all know exist, that we can have a fast track to fixing. Crime, giving these young kids something to do to distract them from all the foolishness that's going on here in Shreveport right now. So that's some of the basic main focuses of this whole program. And the young people, they are your future. And right now, us starting together at the beginning, we can make them, and we still want the doctors, the lawyers, the dog garbage men, but again, Shreveport per capita is one of the most highly educated cities I have ever been to. There's still celebration in New York if somebody goes to college sometime, but here masters, doctorates, lawyers, real estate moguls, entrepreneurs, but you're caught in a matrix on the internet of a shrinking city and business goals where people are. So let us help you with that fight and we'll let them know, just like we both, we both bought homes here. We both live on Cross Lake, right? We'll let the rest of the world know Shreveport is the number one visited city in the nation and I can do that for you. With Mr. Jackson's help.
Thank you all for, for once being in District A. Thank you very much. The next thing that I think that we are excited about because you hear the Facebook chatter, we wanted to make sure that you all were able to share.
Yes.
The dream and the vision and the plan by Mr. Jackson, AKA 50 Cent, to let them know that it's not just some random thing that in rumor mill that somebody is playing with in the air.
No.
And that you're looking at a point to go and see how we can revitalize and strengthen our urban core in our city with entertainment and arts, with the entertainment being that anchor and then the reciprocation of everything else that falls into place with economic development, increasing our population, increasing tourism with all of those entities that are coming aboard. So I look for us to still look at and work out the logistics. Thank you so much, Ms. Moore in community development for your assistance.
I have to thank Ms. Moore. She is, Ms. Moore has, I've been doing this since Ollie Tyler, Adrian Perkins, and now Mr. Arsenal and Ms. Moore has always supported me and driven me to this point. So thank you, Ms. Moore.
And Chief, there is a budget for law enforcement.
Yeah, overtime. A lot of overtime.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
And councilmembers.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Dark.
You know, the council members have any awards, recognition of distinguished guests? Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards, recognition of distinguished guests?
Mr. Chairman, I do have some recognitions and I'd like to ask Chief Smith to come up. Is Chief, is Chief Reese here or Representative of the Fire Department Gary Norman? He would come up. Is there a representative of the Shreveport Volunteer Network here? Sheriff Prater? Louisiana State Police, I believe we have Representative of Louisiana State Police. I am going to fill up the room. As the council is well aware, a week or so ago on Thursday night, we had a tornado in Shreveport and I happened to be in the area very shortly after the tornado came by, went by to the church on Yuri Drive and there was set up already by the Shreveport Police Department, a command center. At the moment I got there, the command center was on top of the hood of a police SUV because they were set up so, they were set up so quickly and then the church, the church provided their facility to allow the police officers to move inside. But the people that are standing before you are the people whose themselves and whose staff reacted so quickly to the tornado. I do not believe that I could have been any prouder of the first responders and the Shreveport Volunteer Network, the Department of Public Works. I wanted to bring them up here to tell them on behalf of the citizens of Shreveport, particularly the citizens who were, who were directly affected by the tornado. Fortunately, there were no injuries reported as a result of this. Good number of people suffered property damage, but it's the people that stand before you and the people that they work with who managed to give solace and to give assistance. The Public Works Department was out as early as Saturday picking up materials and so I just wanted to recognize these first responders and these volunteer responders for the great work that they did in the aftermath of the tornado. It was just, it was wonderful to watch. I was out there. I don't add very much to it except to go, yeah, yeah, you guys are doing a great job. But it was really something to see and we have a group of emergency responders who are well-trained for this and their training and their experience really showed, so I wanted to make sure and recognize all of them. Chief Smith, your, particularly your leadership, your leadership team, the emergency response team, would you introduce them for us, please?
Yes, the gentleman that you see standing behind me, Shreveport is so fortunate, we have what you call a dark unit, which is a disaster team who's specifically trained all year long to react to situations such as this, chemical spills and other mass hazards. As a matter of fact, Lieutenant Silver, couple of guys, Lieutenant Doos, they're the ones who manned that team and they own call around the clock 24/7. Matter of fact, before I got there, they were already there setting up teams to go and do recovery, to check on the injured and I can't thank them enough for their leadership. And in addition to that, I want to also thank the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Department because by the same token, before I got there, deputies were already on the scene. We had planned to stay there all night long until things had been made safe and I want to thank the church so much for opening their doors to us. We wanted a visible presence in the area and our mobile command vehicle's in the shop. It's still in the shop, but y'all getting me a new one here that's coming very soon. And Sheriff Prater, I called him immediately and says, hey Sheriff, we need a mobile command site to set up at Yuri, right in the heart of it. And he said, one is on the way. But it's the kind of cooperation that we do with each other all year long, sharing our resources to make our city as safe as it possibly can. The Fire Department, thank all of you guys so much for being there. The Caddo Parish Commissioners, whose district that is, they were on scene. Caddo Parish Public Works was called in to see if we needed any assistance. I immediately got a call from the Major Williams of the Louisiana State Police saying, what do you need? I'll have troopers on the way. My partner in crime here with Public Works, Mr. Gary Norman, he was there pooling his resources, but it's that kind of working relationship between us all, all year long, that makes for a great team to respond. So thank all of you so much and thank all of you guys. The Volunteer Network, I tell you, I had a, even though it was a disaster scene, I had such an awesome time spending time with this gentleman out there in the wee hours of the night. So thank all of you guys so, so very much.
Is there a representative of Gateway Church here, by chance? Gateway Church is who opened up for a temporary, temporary facility for us and I appreciate that. Also let the council know that I got a call from Governor John Bill Edwards about 5:30 in the morning on Friday, offering whatever assistance the state could provide and also from his chief of staff, both the same morning before 6:00 AM. So I've never been prouder. Gary, do you have some of your people here that you could introduce that were such on the spot?
I do. I've got a couple of my guys. I've got our chief supervisor, Rufus Thomas, who oversees all of our sanitation activities and all, and I've got John Walker. He'll probably ask for a raise before he gets out of here. But John is over our bulk crews and all and, you know, they've done a great job of, you know, hitting the ground and trying to get everything cleaned up. The Shreveport Volunteer Network always does a great job. They've helped us with everything from the ice storm to tornadoes and all and they're always there, you know, as quickly as anybody to help, you know, try to get roads cleared and, you know, get things to where we can start getting back to sort of normal, normal life. But I certainly appreciate, and my guys don't get much recognition for what they do, but they did a wonderful job and, you know, have been back out continually as stuff gets put out to get it picked up, to try to make it as, as, as close to normal as possible. Mayor, I think the Shreveport Volunteer Network may have something for you also.
All right.
And while they're coming, it's a couple of other people that I want to thank also for coming out that night. Our council members who called and came out to show support. Thank all of you so, so very much. And our CEO, Mr. Dark, came out that night to offer whatever assistance that he could and I'm still trying to get some money out of him. I ain't got it yet, he's tight as could be, but I'm going to get it. So thank you so much, Mr. Dark.
All right, everybody. My name is Keith Bryant and I'm the president of Shreveport Volunteer Network. I'm a little dirty, but anyways, it just left the job. I want to say that being from Shreveport, we love our city. That's our slogan for the Shreveport Volunteer Network. And I am so very proud to be a part of a city that, we don't ever hear anything but bad things, but there's so many good things that are here. We have some really good people here. And I've had the privilege and the honor to just see our city react in a way after a storm to bring hope, to bring comfort in a time where people are confused and scared to death. And to see all you guys and to work side by side with all of you guys, it was just an honor. We've had, I wouldn't call it a privilege, but we worked disasters all the way from the southern tip of Florida to southwest Texas after Hurricane Harvey. And it's been amazing to see a response even from our Public Works. Seriously, I have never seen Public Works react so fast with garbage trucks on the scene while picking up debris to just, to start a restoration process. So what this is right here is this is, I am giving you a reminder, this is a key to the kingdom, that what's bound, you can bind on earth, what's bound in heaven. You can loosen it. It gets a little better because this is what is called a disaster piece. This destroyed a lady's house on Chris Street in, I forget the town, town, it's down the south. This is a Cypress Street and it is, it was, I milled it up and I had a friend of mine cut it all out and everything, so there's your, a key to the, not a key to the city, but a key to the kingdom. Thank you very much. I received this key on behalf of the city of Shreveport. Thank you very much. Thank you all. I meant to say that this is, I'll speak for everybody here, that this is from all of us to you and we love, we love our city and just looking forward to what God is doing here, a restoration, it's a prophecy. God is, God is doing so much and I'm so, I'm honored to be a part of it. Anything that we can do for our city, we're here. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. I think Chief Smith took my five minutes, so.
No, Chief. Chair, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to thank everybody that was up here as well. Immediately when the tornado hit, I was at Highland Hospital with my wife who had had a procedure and it went across the field. I could see it going across the field and I immediately called Gary Norman and I said, it looks like there's going to be some damage. And he was, he was on his way before the tornado even finished hitting. So, and then I was there probably about 10 or 11 o'clock that night and we had street sweepers out, garbage trucks everywhere, sheriff's office was everywhere, so I've gotten call after call from constituents saying thank you. In fact, there was, there was one neighborhood that the homeowners association reached out to me and I told them, bear with us, it's going to be a while and the next day it was picked up. So amazing work done by everybody in the city, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other city business?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Does any member have any question related to property standards for Mr. Green? See, Mr. Harris is here. Mr. Harris, I have a list that I'll call you all tomorrow by.
Mr. Harris, thank you for that response on Abbey Street and I think that it was another one in the MLK that you were taking care of.
You all took care of that.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Harris, I got my list. I got it here. There's a house at 255 West 7th Avenue that have, they've asked the city for three years to get cleaned up and it's all falling. years to get cleaned up, and it's all falling in. Also, there's a large pile of limbs, and you can pass this on to Jarvis if it's not for you. There's a large pile of limbs at 248 West Eightieth Street that need to be picked up. There's a mattress on the side of the road across the street from 7803 St. Vincent. At 318 West Eighty-First, also has a pile of limbs in front of it. And the other one I have, it'll be for Jarvis. Thank you so much.
If I may, I would just like to let the council know and the city know that property standard lost, and Inspector this morning, he passed this morning, Mr. Marvin Lee, for his family.
Wow. We'll be in prayer for their family. Wow. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Thank you. Did everyone receive the revenue collection plan implementation report? I see there's no public hearing today. Mr. Dart, will you have any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Yes, sir, we do. We have an ordinance that will be on introduction to amend the 2023 capital improvements budget. And the clerk already has it, I believe.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on non-agenda items and also agenda items, and we will have the vice chair to control the speakers and the time.
Jermaine Anderson. Mr. Anderson, you have three minutes.
Yes, I want to speak about the situation over there, 407 Stoner Avenue. For us, me speaking out, and pretty much it's just two of us left over there. Today, I seen the city marshal's office deliver me and another person an eviction notice. We still need more time. We haven't, I got Easter Seals currently working with me now, and they're, I mean, we can't find anything right now. And so the ones that's left still there, over there at the rental property, we can't find anything. For us, we've been looking, I've been searching, we've been searching, and there's still nothing left. And from my understanding, she gave up the property, and so what I'm trying to figure out is why would they be still putting us out after she's given up the property? So it's been, it's been tough, so we're still over there, but there's no, for us, you know, yeah, so we're still needing more time to stay at the property, and that's what we're needing now. She's given up the property.
And that's at 407 East Stoner?
Yes. And multiple news was over there. I spoke out, and so, yeah, trying to bring more attention and awareness to what's going on over there.
Mr.?
Yes.
I'm familiar with the property.
Okay.
It's a fourplex on Stoner at Gilbert, and they did not have a certificate of occupancy. So that was brought to the attention of the Metropolitan Planning Commission. They went out and did an inspection. The landlord was informed of forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of improvements that she would need to make on the property. She's eighty-four years old, so she's just decided to board it up and sell it. She doesn't want any more tenants there. And that's, that's beyond the scope of the city to, we can't force her to fix the property up.
There's a timeframe that you all have to move out, Mr. Anderson.
I'll know today, but with the hearings that left on our note, I won't know nothing till I get back. I can screenshot it, send it to y'all, or screenshot it to someone on this council and let them know, because we still need more time. We haven't found anything. We've never been able to find anything.
Okay.
And then marshal's office came over there this afternoon for what I've seen, what I did see, and left notices on our doors.
All right.
And it's required, I've administered thirty to sixty days for it to give people notice before they leave a property. And they've, beyond, it was just two weeks, fourteenth, and even wanted people to be out by March first. That's entirely too, too little time to even leave out a rental unit. That's why we're still there. And also, it's hard to find anything right now.
So is the building uninhabitable?
Our particular part, where I'm at, is, again, we, the ones that's still there have nowhere to go. I don't have nowhere to go. We've been looking, but from what I was understood, standing was that it was uninhabitable, but for those that were fighting it like we are, is we have nowhere to go.
My understanding, Councilwoman Taylor, is some of the tenants have been there twenty-plus years. They're paying a very low rent, I think four fifty a month.
Four hundred.
The issue is with the ordinance that was passed last year, that it didn't meet those particular standards, and the landlord simply doesn't want to put the money into it. I think she's just going to board it up and put it for sale.
Okay.
So I guess according to the city ordinance, yes, ma'am, it's uninhabitable.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brooks, did, who reported her to the MPC? Do we have any idea?
I do not.
Did Easter Seals give you a timeframe back when you would hear back from them?
She said she'll be calling me today, but she's, it's still a process with them, because they have to find a place and then get me there first, you know, so they're, they're working on it as quickly as they can.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, how many inhabitants are we speaking of?
It's just me and one other, it's just me and one other person upstairs.
So just two?
Two people there, left there, besides me and one other person, yes.
And are all rents up to date?
Yes.
Through the end of the month?
Mine is, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I think the parish is still working and trying to get you all some level of assistance as well.
Okay.
So I would just say hold tight for, because they are working expeditiously they can, but you would have to vacate those premises, because she's decided that she doesn't want to do the work, so, which would mean that it would be closed. But there is some other avenues and individuals that are willing to work to try to find housing for those that have been displaced. And it's privately owned, so that's beyond our scope as far as the city is concerned. However, it does not mean that there aren't other entities that are trying to help you locate some level of housing.
But like I said, we, right, okay.
Okay.
And like I said, we still need more time over there.
Okay. This is your correct contact number?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Liz Swain.
Liz Swain, 416 Cotton Street, Shreveport. And this is, I just wanted to introduce Lorenzo Lee. Lorenzo, for those of you who are new to the council, is the head of Shreve Park Parking Division. It is on your agenda for tomorrow. I believe it's thirty-two, am I right on that? I think, I think it's thirty-two. It's a resolution giving the mayor the authority to sign the contract for Shreve Park Parking Division, and wanted to see if there were any questions that you had for us today that we can answer for you. We also have a handout that hopefully is in your stack of other readables, so if there are any questions that you have, please let us know. Anything we can answer for you while we're here? If not, you know where to find us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Joshua Hanson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilman. I've got a lengthy list for you today. Passed out some flyers for something that's happening, I know, in Ms. Bowman's district, and I'm going to start with that. This Saturday at 8:00 AM, we will be doing a cleanup in Queensborough, so if anybody's available wants to come help clean up Queensborough, the trash, cleaning up yards, please show up and help us. And on that note, I want you guys to urge our police force to start enforcing the litter laws. You know, some of y'all that know me see that there is a whole lot less of me today than there was six months ago. I walk seven miles every day picking up trash in the city, and I'm sick of it. I mean, I pick up so much drug paraphernalia, liquor bottles, in every community I walk, and it's sad. So I want some help to stop that. The other thing I have, Mr. Talfarro, you in particular, I appreciate everything you've done for me, the responsiveness, truly a blessing to our community. The last thing on my little list is, it's probably going to involve DOTD, but the intersection of D Street and Shreveport-Barksdale is a nightmare. Every day, there's a wreck there, because people are not reading the signs that say, you know, no turn on red, you know, driving on the shoulder. If y'all can get together with somebody and push DOTD, Police Department, whoever, to do something about that intersection, because I don't want to see anybody else get hurt, lose their car, lose their life over something stupid.
Where's the intersection again?
D Street at Shreveport-Barksdale.
Oh, okay.
It's right in front of the McDonald's there. They're, they change the lights and stuff to where there's turn signals, but people still run that red light every day. There's literally a wreck there every day. So that's, that's all I needed. Like I said, please show up at that cleanup and help us. We're going to need all the help we can get.
And, yes, Chair, I just want to let you know that I have reached out to traffic engineering to actually go out there and take a look at that, because I think after we spoke, obviously, people are using the shoulder to make the right-hand turn, and it stacks up, you know, traffic back there by McDonald's and Ming Garden and so forth and so on, so we're making every effort to kind of get the wheels of government to kind of take a look at that, because we realize it is a, it is a hazard situation, so I just want to let you know that.
Well, I appreciate it. I just wanted to put it on the record publicly, so everybody knew what was going on.
Thank you. Sir, before you go, I don't want you to think that you're only invited in Councilwoman Bowman's district. Let me give you my phone number. Whenever you want to come to District L, then just feel free to give me a call.
We're coming.
All right, thank you.
I represent 279 real estate brokers, including that one sitting right there, and that one sitting right there. This man over here's not a broker yet, you know, we're coming.
Thank you.
We're getting out, that's, that's my mission for the, you know, for the real estate brokers in this community, is to clean this town up.
Thank you, David. Thank you.
Last name, Green. Would you pronounce your first name?
My first name is Jadrian.
Jadrian.
Just like you're saying Adrian, but Jadrian.
Jadrian.
Okay. It's nice to meet you all. Good afternoon. Again, my name is Jadrian Green. I was told about this meeting, and when I was told about it, it was short notice, but I didn't even want to miss the opportunity to present myself and let you guys know what my head and the things that I was trying to accomplish, so I came today. But I will return at the next meeting, where I will be more organized and have my conversation more structured, but there's no, never any time like the present, so I'm here today. Okay, basically, I'm thirty-nine years old, I'm a young black man, I'm born and raised in Shreveport, okay? I have associate of accounting, I have associate of business management. I also have a GED, I never walked across high school stage. I got my GED at sixteen from Bo-Tech. I was home in the fall of 2001, southern here in Shreveport, I acquired a, a social of accounting, associate of business management. There I started in Wile. Okay, this whole time, I was coming from a couple of rural neighborhoods, so basically poverty is what I'm saying. Now, for me to accomplish that at that period of time, at the age of sixteen, which means my mentor, my folks, what I was trying to do was something completely different from my criminal history. So when my name comes across, and it's, and my criminal history is the only thing that is depicted and that is looked at, well, my name was never even given a chance, nobody ever even looks at these other, my other accolades, my other accomplishments that I have done, which is completely unfair. But I want you all to know that this happens every day, so often, so many times, to so many young black men like me. Not only CCC, but every other jail that Louisiana makes all that revenue off of are filled with young black men, as well as myself. Now, I have not once said that, I didn't do a number of those things that I have been accused and convicted of, but at this point, I mean, I've paid my debt, I did my time. Now, coming back out, and when I'm hearing all of these things, and they're setting up all this program, talking about recidivism, reducing the recidivism rate, and reducing crime, and they don't want us to go back in these positions, well, we get out and there's nothing for us. Even the young men who's working hard like me, trying to show that we are recovering, we are trying to do things that. I acquired an LLC in 2020. Unfortunately, at the beginning of 2001, I found myself in another situation, merely trying to provide, working as well. But when, when your pay scale is nine dollars an hour, you know, even with, even with my degrees, because when they look at my degrees and my credentials, then they go say, whoa, he's a criminal as well. What can we do to change that? Okay, I have my LLC set up in place. I know about the fair share program, but is it really a fair share program? Because, and what I mean by that is this, okay, you have a gentleman coming back into society with absolutely nothing, but he has the mental capacity to actually run this business. Yet, when we go into the fair share program, now I have to have business insurance, I have to have a bank account set up. Okay, can we, before that, set up some sort of fund to say, hey, let's, let's, let's set aside twenty-five hundred, or it doesn't even have to be any extra money left over. All the, all, enough money to go, to come down here and pay the two hundred and fifty to get your occupational license, okay? Then a lot, what industry are you going in? Okay, this is how much your insurance costs for your business. A lot of that money to get that business insurance, to get that bank account. Now, we're in business. Now we can go into the fair share program, because I have an email on my phone right now. I don't have the three hundred and three dollars to pay for my business insurance, so I can fill out the fair share application and also the vendor's packet to bid on these jobs. Okay, now also, when we bid on these jobs, I need focus on who do these contracts actually go out to? Who are these dealings going out to? Because this is something I've been trying to do since the age of sixteen, okay?
Mr. Green, so the concern that you have, because your time is up speaking, the time, the concern that you have is that you need to have questions answered as to the fair share program? You looking for some incentives of the fair share program of going in and get started? So do you have a business?
Yes, ma'am. The name of my business is JGMP Group. It stands for Jadrian Green Multi-Purpose Group. And the reason I call it that, because I do a number of things, everything from learning landscaping, the drawwall, you know, I do a number of things, and I plan on it growing. So I'm also starting my 501(c) here recently, and my sister is going to join there with me, she has a counseling degree, and so, I mean, I'm growing, I'm growing as much as I can, and I'm trying my best to stay on this side.
So have you had a talk with Mr. Wheeler?
Uh, Mr. Wheeler? I had a talk with Mr. Wheeler years ago, and I'm just going to be honest, I don't even think Mr. Wheeler should be in that position.
Okay.
And I mean, that's, that's me speaking from, from the public and other people who have deal with him, and the reason I say this is because exactly what I'm talking about. Now, the last contract that we're giving out, I saw they posted in the quizz right before I came home, because I came home in September. Now, before I went at the beginning of 2020, me and another guy was talking, okay, that was Ninja's remodeling. When the contracts came out, Ninja got, Ninja was remodeling this on there, but it's for five thousand dollars. But, okay, look at Wilka Construction, fifty-five, a hundred and twenty thousand, and we talking about several contracts that they just got issued. Okay, so my thing is, me saying, okay, here I am, I'm a small business, I got a law service, well, say, oh, well, give me five thousand. Know that I'm not here for that. What I'm saying is, put these people in position, because when we talk about stopping crime, the police force can't do it. But you're not going to have a community of people who are going to want to speak out or help them, because we're dying, because we're dying. You know, we don't, it's no money. When you talk about these kids, and I can advocate for my neighborhood, because I have been that person for so many of the young kids out of my neighborhood, you understand what I'm saying? But there is absolutely no hope, because there is nothing to do. There is nothing to look forward to, at all. And this is coming from, I'm speaking as a person of the people that I'm speaking for. Nothing to look forward to, at all.
So we have your contact information down here?
Yes, ma'am.
And that will follow under the administration?
Yes, ma'am.
For them to provide a follow-up with you regarding that, regarding what you discussed, and we'll have somebody to reach out to you at some meeting, so they can sit down and discuss the concerns that you have and see how we move forward from there.
Yes, ma'am. And I had one other thing, Mr. Austin, if it's not a problem, I would like to have a one-on-one with you at some point in time, sooner than later though, sir. And that was something that I had been trying to get with the mayor's office for years, but I never, I never hear, I had, well, yeah, here's a, but I never hear anything back, and I do feel like that the public, at some point, we should be able to have direct communication and let you know, look, these are the things that we want. And I also think that, like, y'all should let the public know exactly what you're capable of doing, what your powers are, and what I mean by, what's the breakdown of the legislation, and what I mean by that is, as the mayor, so we say, Mr. Tom Austin is the mayor, now on the surface, the only thing the common person know is that, hey, this is the mayor, so he makes those decisions. But it's really not that just easy when you break down. But it's really not that easy when you break down legislation because you have to go in front of board and council and all these things, and the decision is made collectively, okay? If that's the way this works. But if the way that it works is that you can directly make a decision, Mr. Austin, though, we need you to make these decisions, and we need these decisions to be instantly because a lot of other things become instantly, you know? But the welfare of the people are not instant, and we need those things instant, if that's not a problem.
Thank you for your comments.
Yes, sir. But to answer my question about the one-on-one.
Thank you for your comments.
So, that's a no?
My office handles all my appointments. You can call my office and we'll decide whether we'll be able to find a...
Whether you'll be able to talk to me or not. And this, this is my point, counsel, but thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Ken Craft?
Captain Lewis got the comments.
Thank you.
We have no executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction ought to be adopted. Mr. Dark, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. First item on regular agenda legislation is Resolution 166, which is the Tiff District resolution that actually will be able to be acted upon at the next council meeting. Resolution 31 is the one that was postponed last time, encouraging SPD to place a temporary moratorium on the issuance of citations relative to the school zone cameras. 32 is the one Ms. Swain was here to talk about, which executes the contract, authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the parking system management with DDA. This is, this will be a new three-year contract. Their third, their last one expired at the end of last year. 33 and 34 basically do the same thing, but just for different pieces of property. They authorize the mayor to release a utility servitude or a portion of a utility servitude in the, in part of the Providence Phase 3 units. These are places where there, in the original plat, there was a utility servitude that no one ended up building anything on, so we don't have a problem with releasing them. 35 celebrates Sigma Omega Chapter, AKA, because of their 30th Annual Debutante Cartier, and that's a resolution sponsored by Ms. Taylor. 36 proclaims March 2023 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport. The theme apparently is celebrating women who tell their stories, which would be, and I think there've been some ceremonies, I think I saw a picture of Ms. Taylor at one, I believe, honoring folks who are, you know, women in the local media. And that one's sponsored by Ms. Bowman and Ms. Taylor. Excuse me, the next one is, well, both of them are. 37 proclaims March 16th as Retired Teachers Day in the city of Shreveport. 38 honors Kerry Camp for his years of contributions to the radio industry, including most recently at Alpha Media USA. And 39 honors Bishop Sean Cooper, Sr. That's one proposed by Chairman Green for his many contributions, including founding New Creation Family Church and having a mentorship program called School of Greatness and the Legacy Leadership Alliance.
Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? Now, Mr. Dark, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March 28, 2023?
Yes, sir. Resolution 40 authorizes the mayor to accept a monetary donation, which I believe is just a little over $688,000 from AEP SWEPCO. There is an economic development street project for the Resilient Park that is about to go to bids, and it looked like, given the estimates, that the funds that were available, we're not going to be sufficient to do that, so AEP has stepped up to meet what they believe is the gap, and we really very much appreciate that. 41 authorizes the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement and other documents associated with a grant from the state for what's called a water sector program. It's a $5.8 million grant that is mostly going to be used to do some significant upgrade and maintenance at some of the city's water tanks. It also has about $800,000 in it because the state wants us to take over or to provide service to a little utility system in the Lake Shreve area, which has been served by water wells and which can no longer be that way. The state's giving us 100% of the cost in order to allow us to tie onto that.
Mr. Dark?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
On that one, will that be annexed into the city at some point?
I don't know if we've gotten that far yet, but yes, sir, I assume it will be.
Because they, what about their, you said just the water and the sewer, or...
Mr. Daniels here, I think he knows more about that one than I do, but I would assume both, yes, sir.
Because I know it's got a private sewer system as well as water, so...
So, it's only going to be the water?
Okay.
There are no plans at this point to annex it into the city. We're just basically going to tie into the water system and supply them with water. We would have liked to have done the sewer, but we weren't able to include that in the grant, and we may go back for it in the future.
Okay. I just, is that on that Wildwood Water System, or is it...
It's on a private water system that they use water wells, and the issue was that Louisiana Department of Health had instructed them to drill a second water well as a backup supply, and they didn't have the money to do it. So, they were getting violation after violation every time they were, did their survey. So, the developers of the subdivision came to the city and asked us if, you know, we'd be interested in taking over. So, we, so we did the economics, and it looked like a pretty good deal, and the state's going to pay 100%. So, we're just basically going to hook up to their system, lay a line.
Good, okay. I just, I think logistically, it's going to be hard to annex that just due to the fact it's so far out there.
I don't think, you know, there's been no discussion of annexing. They're just paying, going to pay the higher water rates, but they seem pleased to do so.
Yeah, I think when your wells are drying up, that's a, that's a problem all around District D, honestly, in areas that are outside the city, that these wells are drying up. There was one, I think, the other day that I think you helped me with at the corner over in Brooks and Ball and Trey Drive, where the lady hadn't had water for almost two months and was having to get through, and there's a water line running right across the street from her house that's a city water line, so...
Yeah, we're trying to, trying to figure out how to get her the water.
And I think, I think she's got it now, which, but I think that that's, that's something that the city needs to work with the parish on at some point, maybe the administration does. I know that the port line runs through there and some other stuff, but there really is an issue with those wells drying up out there. And if we're going to do it for one subdivision, maybe there's grants out there to help us get the other ones, and then...
If the, if the state does more, I mean, one thing that they will allow repeatedly is consolidation. So, any kind of consolidation that we can find, they're pretty open to approving that.
Yeah, and you know, you've got the apartments by LSU S. that are outside the city, they're surrounded all the way by city, and they don't have enough water. If there's a fire, there's no fire plugs there at East Kings. And East Kings and Burke Coons, University Vet's out, so is the apartments, there's two sets of apartments there. So, at some point, it looks like to me, we need to maybe start consolidating. So, I'm not against this, I just don't think that annexing it is good. So, if we're going to let them stay outside the city, I'm good with it.
Yeah, they don't seem to want to be annexed either, so...
I don't think anybody does, but...
We're happy taking it over.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Thank you, Mr. Dark.
42 is one I wish I were not talking to you about quite the same way because this is the one that, the annual resolution that gives the council's approval for the mayor to pay the next year's insurance premiums. You all budgeted, I think you all paid about $5.2 million for various insurance coverages last year, and the current estimate is $8.2 million. And part of that, and we will have final numbers by the time you actually have to vote on this on the 28th, but we needed to get it on your agenda so we would in fact have insurance coverage on the first. Part of the reason the premium's gone up the way it has is that we have done a pretty good job of revaluing a lot of our building assets, and the, actually, the value that we'll be insuring is about 30% more than we were. And that is a reason for part of it. Part of it is the insurance market being what it is. But we will, you know, I think we budgeted $5.9 million this year, so we will be back at you with some budget amendments at some point as soon as we get some real numbers. But, you know, we just let, need to let you know, this is most likely what's coming. I think a representative from Alliant, which is the company that's been helping us obtain the insurance, is likely to be here tomorrow to answer any questions you might have and maybe to give us some updated data. Are you here now? Okay, good. Come on. We haven't met, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dark, is there any, is the administration doing anything to look at all of these properties that we have that may not be in commerce or may not be being used, but we're still paying the maintenance and upkeep and insurance on?
We can probably answer that question a little bit.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Carleen Patterson, and I am the National Public Entity Practice Leader for Alliant Insurance Services. With me is Tyler Smith, who is one of my colleagues, who worked, we partner with the city to protect your, not only your property assets, but also your financial assets when it comes to liabilities from third parties. And so, we wanted to give you a little bit of information about some things that the city of Shreveport cannot control when it comes to the insurance market, and also some things that we've been doing to partner with the city to help drive the premiums in the future. We not only place your insurance, but we're also your risk control and claims consultant as part of the contract. So, what we want to do is look at, how can we, we call it in the industry, drive your total cost of risk? So, it's not just the premiums that you're going to be looking at today and voting on on the 28th, but what are some other things that we can do to help drive down the costs of the claims? Because you have significant retentions within your liability program and your property program. So, what can we do to help drive down frequency and also drive down the severity of those losses? And so, we've been working with city attorney's office, the finance office, the administrator, to talk about some of the consulting services that come along, not only from risk control, but also from a severity standpoint. And when you do have claims, what can be done to help reduce those costs? So, what I'm going to do is turn it over to Tyler for just a few minutes to talk a little bit from a macro level about the insurance market, and then a little bit more specifically about what we're doing for the city.
Thank you, Carleen. Council members, mayor, thank you very much for having us here. So, I'm a property insurance specialist, so you'll notice on your handout that that's the big number in the list of numbers. Here is the commercial property. As you've probably heard, the insurance industry has entered what's called a hard market. And a hard market is when you don't have enough capital, you don't have enough capacity available to ensure the values that are at risk. And over the last five years, we've seen an increase in frequency, increase in severity of both catastrophic, so hurricanes, tornadoes, wildfires, freezes, these kinds of things, as well as attritional losses, things like fires, arson, civil commotion, which I think we're all aware of. What this has done has caused a drawback in capacity from the market. If you're going to put your money somewhere to invest, why are you going to put it in places where it's going to be paid out in claims, right? So, the city of Shreveport, from a property standpoint, currently purchases $500 million property insurance program. That consists of about 12 to 13 carriers all within that program. Some of those carriers are pulling back their capacity, and in order to replace that capacity, it's at a premium. Basically, higher demand, lower supply, prices go through the roof. So, these are things that aren't necessarily within the city's control. What is within our control are things like proper data, proper valuation. As, I forgot who meant, who asked the question about making sure all your addresses are actually correct. We don't want to insure things that don't exist anymore, right? So, we at Alliant are trying to work with the city to aggregate all of that data and put it in a format that is appropriate for the markets, that allows you to stand out from the other 200 submissions they're going to get that day from other municipalities, K through 12, any other public entity that they may see. So, I wanted to let Carleen talk a little bit about the liability side because all I do is property. But if y'all have any questions, we'll wait till the end, and feel free to ask. Thank you.
So, from a liability standpoint, the insurance carriers who are writing those property claims and writing the property policies, they also insure on the liability side, and there's a lot of things that are driving liability. Anything from, I always say, whatever happens in California slowly trickles away across the United States. And so, you have a lot of litigation where the settlements are skyrocketing out the roof. There's things like, some soft things, like lack of public confidence and the civil commotion type of claims. Those types of claims drive from a liability standpoint, and when it goes in front of a court, in front of a jury, the juries are awarding really high awards. In the state of Louisiana, you do have some protections, but there are a lot of things that fall outside of that. And so, just the litigious nature is also driving that. From the city, I'll go a little bit more specifically into the city from a liability side. We're seeing, when we analyze your losses, that there is increases in frequency with regard to auto liability claims. So, you know, are the, so looking at the city's procedures as far as, do you get motor vehicle records when you hire employees or if they're driving? What is driving the types of losses that you're having from a liability standpoint? And we'll look at some of those to try and help implement some procedures and safety procedures that could help reduce the number of losses. So, we're seeing frequency from a liability standpoint, and that is in turn impacting some of the numbers that you're looking at. We have carriers who don't want to write the city unless you'll consider taking a much higher retention. Right now, you have a million-dollar retention for most of your third-party liability for auto liability. It's a $500,000 per occurrence limit. And so, anything we can do, because that's the city's money, that's, you know, and I'm sure you know how much is budgeted in the tort fund or the risk management fund, but what can we do to help drive the numbers that it's your money that's being spent and the excess carriers are sitting over the top of that? And so, that's what's driving those premiums from a liability standpoint. Tyler's going to talk a little bit about some of the things we want to do from a property
So, any questions off the bat from what I mentioned earlier?
I have a question, Tyler.
Sure.
Or Carleen, either one. So, what you're saying is that our liabilities or the payment of our liabilities or the suits that we may incur are a product of what's happening in the East Coast or the West Coast, and then it kind of funnels down to us being in the Midwest?
From a, from a general market standpoint, yes, there are things where certain carriers don't want to write public entities anymore, same kind of capacity issues on the property. So, they look at it and, or they want to charge more or make sure the city has a bigger piece of skin in the game, for lack of a better term. So, there are some things that are driving the market outside of your control, but then we also look at what's going on within the city and are there things that we can do to control?
And so, that's your job. Your job is to make sure that we get the best deal for our bucks.
It is our job to make sure that you get the best deal, yes.
The best available product on the market. So, from the property side to your question, sorry, I'm going to do this here.
That's all right.
From your, to your question is, you know, we've all heard about Florida and what's going on in the insurance market there, right? Both from the homeowners as well as commercial side. The Gulf Coast generally is all being kind of lumped in together with this marketplace because the capacity that's deployed here is being hit every year with multi-billion-dollar claims, right? I mean, Hurricane Ian alone was, is looking to be a $70 billion claim to the, to the industry. So, Louisiana, in particular, there's a lot of risk along the Gulf Coast, right? Shreveport is not on the Gulf Coast. It's our job to deliver that narrative to the marketplace that says Shreveport is not New Orleans, right? So, we have to, we have to find ways to differentiate from the rest of the market. Otherwise, it gets lumped in together. And when you think about it, from an insurability standpoint, you have a concentration of values in a small geographic area relatively. It's not like Shreveport has interests all over the United States. So, if something happens here, it's going to affect a large portion of the portfolio along with potentially other insurers that corporations, the carriers also insure. That's what we call the bull's eye effect. Everything's in one area. And that happens a lot with municipalities. It's just the nature of, nature of the beast. So, these are the, these are the factors that you can't control. It's inherent to your, to your risk. What we're trying to do is find the factors that we can control and deliver the best possible narrative to the market so you can get the best possible return on your investment.
And one final question.
Yes.
So, do you look at other municipalities? So do you look at other municipalities, um, that are actually regional? In other words, we're in the Arc-La-Tex, so do you, do you look at other municipalities that are similar in size to us, that have the same, you know, or the similar, um, act, um, um, stuff, so to speak, whatever, it's buildings or, or otherwise, um, and, and give those, give us a rate like that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, as, as I, as Carleen mentioned, she's head of national public entity. I do national properties, so I'm looking at municipalities from Maine to California, from the, from Brownsville, Texas, up to Minnesota, and every municipality is different, right? If we all went into the market at the same, with the same risks, then everyone would get the same price, and it'd be the, you know, there would be no differentiation there. We try to benchmark municipalities against each other to, in order to leverage where it's needed. Like I said, Shreveport's actually in a little bit better position geographically than a lot of your other co, uh, uh, cities within Louisiana, right? So we need to, to, to put that forth up front, to let the markets know that this isn't on the Gulf Coast, we're not worried about hurricanes up here, we may be worried about tornadoes and freezes, but that's different from down south, right? That's a different chunk of money within the carrier's exposure than what they're using for hurricanes, so that's how, that's how we try to differentiate and give a narrative.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah, so our job, we, and what we do is when we go to the insurance market, we take, bring a submission that really spells out what is the city of Shreveport, and we do benchmark you against other entities within the area, and also nationally, and cities of your size, but there are certain things that make Shreveport unique. One of it is the location, you're in Louisiana. Um, the second thing is the claims that you've had, and, um, and the carriers look at at least a five-year loss history to say, what happened, what's going on, because in the insurance industry, we look backward to figure out what's going to happen going forward, so that's the second thing. The third thing is how accurate are your values, and as Mr. Dark, um, uh, in, for the inflationary, um, uh, impact on your schedule of values is being felt, the values have gone up by about 30%, and that's with the, like, locations that we're confident of. Uh, we're in the process of starting a project to make sure we know where every location is, and that is included on your schedule of values, because even though you have a $500 million blanket limit of insurance, if a huge disaster comes through, it's also tied to that schedule. So we're working with the city to make sure that the, the schedule is accurate, that the values are accurate, because just like your, your own homes, the, have gone up because of cost of inflation, replacement cost values, um, cost of labor, cost of concrete, cost of steel have all really impacted. How much does it cost if this building was to be destroyed by some sort of a natural event? What would it take to rebuild it today, not the cost that it was when it was built however many years ago, and so that's what's on your schedule of values, and so we're working on doing a lot of different things to try and make sure that's accurate.
So the limit for insurance companies go back how many years when it comes to claims?
Usually, is it five or?
From a, from a loss standpoint?
Yes.
It's typically five years.
Five years.
Is what they look at. Now, depending on the market, they may, they may look 10 years, but the, the, the industry standard is five years.
Okay.
As a look back.
Is that for?
For liability, it's 10. Like workers comp is 10.
Sorry, yeah, property.
Sorry.
So property, you look at five.
So the freeze claim from Erie is on your, is in your history, there was a large water
The water damage claim.
Brush here, so they're looking at that and, um, so, and then going forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So, so my point earlier with, with Mr. Dark is, I know we've got several hundreds of thousands of square feet of buildings, and, and I wanna know, are we utilizing those buildings, or are they sitting vacant, and we're paying money on them? Is there any plans for those buildings? I think Mayor Perkins' administration hired somebody actually to go in and look at all of our real estate assets, because I'm assuming this is figured like on the Marshall Swift, where they take the cost estimator to figure out what the cost to replace it is, what, what the true cost is to replace it. And, and I just wanna know, and this is, this is really not for you, this is more from the administration, all the properties that we own in Shreveport, what are they being used for, number one, and number two, are they still, do they still have a use, useful life to the city? Because with a, with an increase like what we're talking about, if they're properties that we're just holding on to, it might be better to do like we did with the chamber and give them the old library where we don't have to keep that, that liability insurance on it. Is that part of something that y'all are doing, or, there, there supposedly was a list a couple of years ago that someone had done in the Perkins administration that chronicled every piece of real estate we had, and what those pieces of real estate were being used.
We've been working with, um, the, with the city to validate that list. It is a schedule of values. We have found a lot of things that are outdated on it, and the last, part of the reasons why this is a not-to-exceed is because we have been working diligently with the city to try and make sure that schedule's as accurate as possible for right now, for what we're doing in the insurance market, and there were locations that were on the list that the city doesn't own anymore. There were some locations that were on the list severely underinsured for what the real value was, so we have talked with Mr. Dark, and we've included in this number, um, a, a process, uh, with, with a third-party appraiser, and also with our, uh, minority small business partner, to make sure that we identify any of the inconsistencies or inaccuracies on the schedule.
And then I guess it goes back to the administration on if there are large vacant buildings that have been sitting there for several years, is it something that we, we need to continue to, to keep? And if we don't, then we can nod it, because let's say you've got a 30,000-square-foot building, the replacement cost on a 30,000-square-foot building that's sitting empty is ridiculous. That's gonna bump your premium up, so I guess, I guess my, my question is, or my, my concern is that, and, and I have full faith that that's probably going on right now with this administration, because it was in the last administration, but I just don't wanna continue to pay for something that we're not using.
And that's what we wanna go through this process to see.
Okay.
And make sure of, because it's impacting both property and your liability, because we have to submit that schedule of values to your casualty insurance carrier for general liability, your pollution liability carrier, and, you know, there's other lines of coverage that rely on that schedule. So that's why we're going through that process.
Well, thank you, and I'm glad, I'm glad y'all are, so I, I would like to have an update at some point, maybe down the road from the administration, kind of where we are with the buildings that we own, what the use of those buildings are, and is there any projected use over the next four years of those buildings?
I do know that, and we really need to shout out two folks who aren't here today, Shelley Regal and Russell Delancey from Sbar.
Absolutely.
They have done very little else for the last several weeks as far as trying to get the schedule of values as, as good enough, good a set of numbers as we could get. I know some, some buildings got culled off as a part of what they were doing, but these folks are nothing if not persistent.
Good.
They, you know, they, they really were pushing extraordinarily hard to get as good a information as we had, and, and it became fairly clear that some of what we had was not real good information, and Shelley and Russell have done a, just an incredibly good job of getting us as far as we could in the time we had.
Absolutely, they sure have, they sure have, and that's why we were diligent, because we don't want you paying premium on stuff you don't own anymore.
Well, it's, it's, it's further than that for me, it's not stuff that we don't have anymore, it's stuff that we don't need.
Yeah.
If we don't need it anymore, then we need to figure out a way to repurpose that to somebody else. So, thank y'all.
And when you do look at these numbers, I don't, I think you have this in your documents, anything that's, well, maybe in the resolution, but there are a lot of numbers that are, they're not to exceeds, they're guesses based on what we know about the insurance market, and they're very conservative, so we do anticipate that $8 million number to go down.
Good.
But we didn't, we just wanted to give you the worst-case scenario.
All right, well, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Resolution 43 authorizes a request to be made in the State General Board to, uh, allow some bids to be taken on about 47 acres of land in, in District A, a little area south of Cross Lake. I believe the folks that have been involved in that have worked a little bit with Councilman Taylor over the last couple of months, uh, you know, we have had a number of folks drill inside the city, and we've had relatively little issues here for, and they would not be drilling on city property, but if it turns out we do get bids, this will be, you know, like $3,000 an acre for 47 acres, so it's 141 or $2,000.
Thank you. Any questions, uh, comments on any of those items? If not, Mr. Dark, will you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to March 28, 2023?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have a series of budget amendments, and then they kind of tie together, and I'll try to explain how they do that. 22 amends the community development budget as a part of the, uh, changes in economic development. There was a grants writer who had been assigned there, who is now working for Ms. Moore, and what we're doing is funding that position by this budget amendment, and there's also a companion to that in 23, which is the general fund budget amendment that does several things. It does that, um, it adds some money to the solid waste fund, because it appeared that we had underbudgeted what we needed to pay the landfill contractor. Um, it reduces the transfer to Sportran a little bit, because we found another funding source that you'll see in the capital budget amendment that we're gonna add tomorrow to fund a little bit of the, of the local share of, of a grant that, that Sportran had gotten for, for construction along King's Highway. Uh, we've also funded in there the cost of the, uh, two elections that we're involved in this spring. We had a little bit of money in it, but didn't think we had enough. Um, I believe those are the, you know, the main things we're doing there, we're funding that with an increase in oil and gas revenues that we believe is already, it was only budget 100,000, and we've already passed that for the year, so we think we have enough there to make that work. 24 amends the MPC budget, we're swapping some un, likely to be unused salary money to let them replace one of their three vehicles that are beginning to age out on them. 23 amends the, the solid waste budget, basically it's a companion to the general fund budget. We're appropriating in the landfill revenue that you increased earlier in the year, plus the transfer from general fund, so that we'll have enough mon, money to pay the, uh, landfill contractor for the full year, we believe. 26 amends the Sportran budget, and all it does is it, it reduces the, uh, amount the general fund is paying Sportran to match a capital project, because we have found it, as we said earlier, we found another funding source for that. 27 closes and abandons a part of the old Flonno-Lucas Road dedication. This is in the general area of Flonno-Lucas and LRB, where Flonno-Lucas used to have a different route, um, before the intersection construction was done, and there's a piece of property along there that, that someone wants us to close and abandon, and we're gonna be keeping some utility servitudes in there, because those were, were, were still there, even though the road isn't used anymore except as a driveway. 28 amends the MPC fee schedule. It adds a fee of $500 to extend, for extensions to previous approvals for what amounts to be cell towers, and they, they did a survey to see what other folks were charging for that, and pretty much put this in the middle of where those charges were, and there's also a fee that, for $30 for signed demolitions, that is already what permits charges, and it puts it in the MPC structure as well, so that people have a better idea if they look in, in the MPC fee structure about what might be coming toward them. And then I'm gonna just briefly tell you that the one we're asking you to add tomorrow is, amends the capital budget, and all it does is put the money in that we're, that SWEPCO is giving us for the resilient project, and changing the funding sources around for the, uh, the, uh, the work that we're, we're taking a little bit of money out of general funds, Sportran, and finding, we're, we're closing an old capital project that's been on the books for 25 or 30 years, and using that as a funding source for part of the raised grant.
Are there any questions or comments on any of those items? If not, Mr. Dark, will you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final pass?
Yes, sir. 18 amends the general fund budget, really does a couple of things. We have a capital ordinance right after that, uh, 19, that also is a companion to it. We're going to repair the water damage that was done to 401 Texas where Ms. Moore's office is. Part of that's being paid for by insurance, and part of it's gonna be, have to be paid by general fund. We're working with the parish on a project, uh, to waterproof the windows in this building. They're actually doing the, the work on the contract, and we're, we're paying for the floors that are ours, so that would be in this one. We're also got 72,000 in there to repair the HVAC at Central Fire Station. 19 basically is the capital ordinance that just received that general fund money for the 401 Texas and the waterproofing project. 20 amends the capital budget to basically appropriate the money that, uh, Public Service Commissioner Campbell announced to y'all a couple of meetings ago, since, for the lighting on Van Parkway. 21 is, is the ordinance that, um, amends the, the, the whole procedure about the, uh, blue line speeding, uh, speed zone tickets, 'cause this take, this would take away the $50, uh, fee, and it has an amendment only because, uh, when I was doing this ordinance, I didn't realize that the ordinance had already been amended a year or so back, and there was a clause left out in, in what I did, so this is fixing it, so it actually matches what's in the code right now. And 14 is zoning case 22, 215C, at the old Notre Dame property that I believe Ms. Taylor had postponed last night.
Could be postponed again.
I believe that's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Are there any questions, uh, comments on any of these items? Madam Clerk, is there any table legislation to be removed from the table? We have no property standards, ADO appeals to consider today. We have no MPC or ZVA appeals to consider tomorrow. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk? Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report? We have a request from the city attorney to go into executive session to discuss the following cases. Madam Clerk, would you read them in the record?
Patricia Prince versus Louisiana Farm Bureau Cavity and Roy Cade versus Raheem Roll.
That's it. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilwoman Jackson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's hold. Thank you.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Taylor? You got the vote?